Just one time a month or whatever.
They're starting to take public comment? Okay.
But for one time or two times, it's try it, but every other time you can do whatever it is. It's okay, that's what I do. Just one time, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So do you think I should leave it for general public comment? Or do the whole thing?
Four minutes.
Okay. Do you think they'll talk me over if I speak my entire comment in Albanian?
Yeah, you're good.
Yay! It's my question! Let's try a shot! Let's try a shot! Let's try a shot! McAllister first! First one, woman goes first!
Hold on. Speaker, this is your time to stop stuff. You know the rule, so do not disrupt me against your first and only opponent. So, Speaker, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Before you begin, I just want to let everybody know, this is the general warning for public comment period. For those of you who are new or are joining us virtually, please keep in mind that you may hear some offensive comments. May we know that those do not reflect the views of this team, of this council, or any individual person around this court. We appreciate your patience. The fastest way to get through this is to just ignore it. The Brown Act did not require you, the public, to listen to the public comment period. So if at any point you would like to leave the room, or if you, if you're watching virtually, you are more than happy and more than welcome to do so. Thank you. Go ahead. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
You can get me motherfucker! I'm the first to have your impermissible vote straight on my personal method as you tell the audience. But the audience approves of my effective communication by the fucked up first black mayor of Los Angeles. You want it? Because she don't want us to have cannabis to get high. I want to get high with you. Does anybody want to get high with me? Well, this type of guy is guideline of a process according to block and Monica over there. Move! Now, she's listening, everybody, because I have an assessment to assess against our local government. Fuck you on behalf of Measure 64 and on behalf of all the business owners who want impermeable sale cannabis, you hoe! Damn, I got item number... Oh, man, this is four pages. Oh, man, I got a rap on this. The rapper's horse and all angry prison go for six dollars and fifty-four million ounces of proposition cake for kids. Wasn't that that song? Proposition cake for kids. All the other fucked up kids with the cake. Want to say fuck you? Man, I go the back of this goddamn forty pages of jet shit.
Can we go to general public comment?
Ah, I'm talking about item number eighteen, it's sixty-nine. Are you retaliating because Mr. Price doesn't recuse himself on the eighteen million bonds on the project known as Main Street? Where's the housing? How many years I've been here explaining to the world about the housing conditions? I prayed to God, prayed to the Jew juice and the money tree to provide fifty-seven more units on behalf of David O. Carter for the record. For I want the record to reflect the motion that I bring to the floor today in allocating more billions of dollars of stolen adequate money by Robin Little and that Jew juice you filled up there talking to Monica. Move! Move! Yeah, everybody, it's Christmas! Look at item seventeen, Bill of the Mayor, fuck the mayor too. Item fifteen, Blue Film and Lee, fuck them too, I'm both those two names. And look at item sixteen, Communication from the Administrative Officer, fuck Matt Zabel on behalf of David O. Carter, a federal judge, and a federal proponent against alley housing and alley-coway ripoff machine. If I had a diamond ring...
Mr. President, I'm a white man, you're a white man today, and your time is in trial.
Where's my non-general public comment?
It's general, general.
I can read this one for you.
It's general.
Yeah.
Sorry. You have one minute for general public comment.
I'll be my time back. Now, when I have a diamond ring, it will shine out of the city of criminal, corrupting and terrorism. Smokin' Scan, you know? For the fact that Marquis Sambo, Django, Django, has a thrill with my big dick. I run my rations so I can buy my cannabis, get motherfucking high on you. If I had a reason, I'd be crying out through the world. I don't give a fuck about you, mommy, mayor vest! Because you're such an ass! If there's really democracy, then let me be the first one to say fuck you!
Next week, they're going to ask people to call the three more names. Christopher Martinez, George DeDe, and John Silver.
Thank you, ma'am.
You need that? George DeDe. Oh, wait, I'll take, I'll record her as well. I'll record her as well.
Oh, item seventeen, public comment.
You have three minutes for the items. I'm going to record her.
My name was...
Um, this is to appropriate one thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars nineteen cents for something called a ceremonial science ceremony. Sounds a little redundant. I understand that this is a relatively small amount of money compared to the budget as a whole. However, I think in an impending structural deficit, it would be wise for this council to not levy expenditures related to ceremonies and super close things, maybe community members, private entities. Because most of the things that they want to see them happen is organizations, paternity parties, instead of the city ponying a bounty, things we really don't need. We should be on a tighter budget. Um, item fifteen is a fifty thousand dollar reward. Uh, I understand what these rewards come out of the city's budget, when it's the people doing LAPD's job for them. Considering the significant portion of the budget the LAPD gets, they should be taking on more of these expenses through their department. The taxpayer shouldn't be on the hook for that. If the LAPD can't find the person and they need the people to do it, they should be paying, not us. Item eighteen is housing revenue bonds for multifamily housing. The amount is eighteen million five hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the new construction of a fifty-seven unit project. I'm sure this is a great project. My, my question regarding these housing revenue bonds tends to be, if we can do revenue bonds to fund developers and landlords to build and own and manage new housing, why can we not do mortgage revenue bonds so that we can finance individuals and families to get into homes that they own? We know that the likelihood of a homeowner becoming unhoused is significantly less as a tiny, tiny fraction of the likelihood of someone who rents becoming unhoused. So when we see these mortgage revenue bonds and these expenditures that go um, to fund developers and landlords, it's kind of like paying the middleman. We should be paying individuals or families to be able to own their homes in Los Angeles, and that will also mitigate the crisis of the un-housed around the population. Um, item seventeen, I thought the time was up on that, but it's really interesting regarding the budget and the negotiations that members of this body made with the mayor regarding reinstating the two hundred and forty, I think, hires for the LAPD. Y'all eliminated your budget, and rightfully so good on that, but the fact that you made this negotiation to bring those hires back to upper free funds for that, and then you're making all these lofty statements in the press um, about supporting these uh, demonstrations while LAPD is terrorizing the city. They set hires to some way no powers. Well, test no content before the way that the things are. Our leaders are in the press, talking a big game. But when it comes to legislation, everything's the same. Your fake ass rally complete with a soundstage that leaves me thinking that it's all political. Without clear action, your words are useless. The people notice it's all political. You're empty of the seed. You're not representing even friends. How's your play then? How are you breathing? Isabel, why are you putting this out? You have more on hand, you should be supporting it.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Boris Wintes, Arielle Elliott, and Aaron Peterson.
Yeah, I got it. Okay. You want me to go or what? Who, who, do you want to go?
Uh, what do you feel like doing?
I'm gonna do it.
Alright. I'll, I'll, I'll record you first. And I'll go after.
Speaker, if you would like to speak to all items in the general public. Okay, Speaker, bring us for the items of one minute for general. Good morning, my name is Christopher Martinez. I'm supposed to have the absentee. Um, just wanted to make some statements. Uh, the DCR, the study hasn't provided any processing timeline. I'd like to provide a comprehensive understanding of the, um, how much it costs to do your application, making it possible to validate whether the increase fees and staffing will affect the bottom line. We're asking, uh, we're being asked to pay without any evidence that it will be mandatory equipment in any other related industry. This would not be acceptable. Um, solutions that I would recommend, cut into an overhead in the light of staffing would clearly define those. Hire third-party compliance consultants to manage licensing inspections and integrate coordinations on a flat contract basis. This would deliver predictability, reduce redundancy, increase performance based accountability, um, and immediately publish accurate, uh, processing timelines wherever license is tied and staged. Without that, this entire, this entire pre-study is technically at best. Um, the system isn't underfunded, it's broken. More money won't fix it. It needs to be rebuilt with efficiency and cost saving at its core, just like the current operators have been forced to operate under the current industry. It makes no sense as to why the DCR insists on charging me five hundred and forty-two dollars to include a PDA to my license and the Allen Department of Finance and the State Department of Cannabis Control. So let's just agree. So we, the DCR wants to change this charter worth two thousand dollars.
So, we have to give everybody about a second of time. So you've requested all items, but legally talking about one of the items related to the Department of Cannabis Regulation.
Just keep going, just keep going. Just keep going, keep going, just keep going. Keep going, keep going.
So if you exhausted one minute on the items, would you like to move to general?
Just, just, just keep going, boo, keep going. Keep going. Yep.
Focus on this side of the ruling.
Hey, reset his time, reset his time!
And sir, you stand there for a blue time, that's your first warning, this is your last warning.
Yes.
Uh, if you'll excuse me, should we ask to stop one minute of the show?
Seven eight in general. So, here's kind of a stoppage of...
Yes, I see now. So, just as a request to the audience, it is extremely helpful if there's someone saying, oh, I have to let us know generally, especially if you're talking about cases of items, which items you would like to talk about. So, as I see seven eight on there, believe you had about, if you've used a minute twenty seconds of those two items. So, I'm gonna ask the clerk to start the clock. We don't like to go down to twenty seconds. That will be your two minutes on the DCR items, and if you'd like at that point, we can move you to general public comment. So, clerk, if you would start the clock over, I'm gonna stop you at twenty seconds, and if you'd like to move to general there. Go ahead.
Yeah, you want me to, I'm supposed to get a minute and twenty? You told me that.
So, I, I give a distraction one more time. What we're going to do, this is the last time I'm going to say. So, there was only two items, I believe, that are related to the Department of Cannabis Regulation. That's seven and eight. You've already used one minute and twenty seconds of your initial two minutes. So, we're going to start the clock at one minute. I'm going to tell you at twenty seconds, because you're gonna get forty, you're gonna have two minutes for the items, who says anyone else at that one? If you would like to, you can move to general public comment where you have additional minutes.
Understood.
We'll start at one minute again.
Okay, so, just to try to reiterate, the fees are ridiculous. There's no reason why the DCR should be charging me five hundred and forty-two times more than what the state of Campus Control charges me to do a change. Like I said, they also want to charge over two thousand dollars just for me to update my ownership information. On the DCC, the state doesn't charge me one percent. Um, I'm gonna just do my general public comments. I wanna start off with, uh, my name is Christopher Martinez, so he go the, you know, the, the famas. I just wanted to let you guys know what I saw at the Alon Time Report. Los Angeles school police will start a safety perimeter around campuses and school events, including graduates, key federal immigration agents, away from students, employees, and families during school official, uh, during school official events, um, starting Monday. The announcement was made by Superintendent Alberto's, uh, in terms of mid-wides, presentation raids in Los Angeles, including one on Monday at the Home Depot or Jason's Home Depot. District leaders are frequently, been, uh, has really been circumvented? Please help the district leaders.
I'll go.
Okay.
Yeah. They're gonna try to fuck me, I just have a feeling, I have a feeling. Yeah.
If you go out from the, the chances are significantly higher if these are...
All I have to say about one and four is that, uh...
I'm going to give two minutes for one and four, and you might want to...
I told him to talk about the Jewish space.
All I need to say is, one, we've been told that this, this funding was the first budget without lobbyists. I think that's a grand statement, and I just heard it. And it's just how you be that real charitable, taking a statement.
I played that for a friend of mine. He almost pipped.
That behind shirt, as Mike Kerr, he's the founder of Peers, wants to know.
He's a producer. I'm getting you in a flash park. That's it. So, I gotta put you on, I gotta put you on.
At Los Angeles City College. Holly Vaddy is there, she would cheer her right now. She would help out, but she never, never, uh, outtake a fella. The only one that does is, uh, Richard Min, who I do much better. Uh, the quote is, there are two or three students who seem to be in teens and that they can't get, uh, Ellen Davis, she can't get, and I know it's a lie. Um, uh, but how they got to threaten Peers, uh, Redford not to help me is just like sucking his tail, just happened before, was the trans named by Kennedy. Sucking his tail.
Did you get the read? It was a good reading, right? It was good, though. It's a good read, it's a good read.
Good morning. What items do you want to speak to?
Uh, all items and general public comment, and I'll walk you through the items.
Okay. I have three minutes for the item number one.
So we're starting on item number one, and it's regarding a CECA compliance. Now, why do we have any faith that the city attorney's office will actually follow through with any CECA compliances? At the Plumb Meeting last week, we had a motion that was talking about such a very similar thing, and I'm gonna make an analogy here, where they were trying to build an entire mansion on an active slide, yet they approved the project anyway. The people that were trying to get their homes rebuilt as a part of the various destruction did not get any sort of consideration, yet the developer who's known to be in the city attorney's pocket got the project approved. It was clearly out of CECA compliance, and yet we have a motion here that we're supposed to take on good faith that this body will vote on it in any which way, in a positive, good faith manner. Obviously, that's not gonna happen. Obviously, the city attorney's office is in the pockets of every developer in the city. Obviously, it's a fact. Shout out to Smokin' Scan, 'cause he knows too. And now we're gonna move on to item number thirteen. We have a discussion on, what do we have? We have yet another housing-related motion. Well, here's what Judge Carter and everybody else in the city thinks about housing-related motions. One of the top names mentioned in the giant fraud case that's against the city is in fact Bob Lumenfield. Repeatedly, Bob's name was brought up on, very well-known for aiding and abetting, colluding with the various developers to not give proper consideration and use that money to line the pockets of their nonprofits and laundry. So congratulations, Bob, your name is repeatedly on the transcript. You officially made legendary status, and I hope to see you one day in prison when I'll visit you for a commissary. Uh, you can definitely count on that. So moving on now to item number fourteen, right? Item number fourteen, we have the labor costs associated. Well, what do your staffers think there, McCosker, of the cut that's coming to their salaries? How do you think I know all this information? How do you think I get all the insider leaks? It's your own staffers, it's your own staffers telling me all this information. It's your own damn staffers, because they're fed up with the fact that they're getting their salaries cut. They're fed up with the fact that you guys are a giant criminal gang. And at the head of it all is the city attorney's office, who repeatedly, what? Does not prosecute LAPD officers for doing vile and disgusting things, like shooting somebody over forty times even after they're dead, like hiring Ralph Campos, who hired a literal convicted serial rapist, who's the head of the LAPPL as a treasurer, who also has a major conflict of interest and has secret contracts to hire his security company to do various work for the LAPD, even though he hired a convicted serial rapist. That's what LA is, that's what this body supports, and that's who the city attorney's office refuses to prosecute. Hiring the convicted serial rapist, Ralph Campos of the LAPPL, that's what this body supports, that the city attorney's office refuses to prosecute, and shout out to Smokin' Scan.
Who would like to speak out? All people there. Madison Shockley, Sheerwood and Chair, and Model Rock.
Pay attention, this is all, this is all, this is...
Good morning. Speaker, just for the items, one minute for general. Sorry, this is, uh, this is Paul Ger, this is your first or last meeting in this meeting, thank you.
I just stopped talking. Yeah, let me sit there. Yeah, let me sit there, leave me for me. All of the payoff to the video, very scared for members to stare. Now, I don't want to be scared.
What, you got a warning? What did he do?
Nothing.
All of the rest, pretty people, big job, ah, we gotta resume the selection process. You're the randomizer, to decide which one of us lucky fools is going to be the winner of that, if we need, to the bad, if we fuck you. We gotta get everybody high, motherfucker. We gotta get that laugh. We gotta get them high, let me suck, bitch. Hello, hey? We don't need some steady phone. It's simple, you just get your bottle of cheap wine, you get your prostitute at seventy-seven to pay, and you get your meat, and you have a nice eating with the peanut breads from all the terrible crap they're gonna drop at you. Take for example, I'm a commercial airbag pilot, and I have to go decompress that for a long, long, actual blast. Now, I totally fucking said no to seventy-eight. Now, if you're not gonna do this, I want full refunds of all the payoff money that has been given to parents and parents. And I will list the notes that I'm tired of the refunds, or Chinese specials. King Kong war, Dong Li Shi, Mong Dong Wu, and just the Dong Wong Lee of Cyprus. Now, I want to get the veto veto, don us a veto. A fair pass, the pain in the ass, over pass. So we say to that crazy Cuban trained terrorist bitch, that we should be focusing entire budget, re-racking, entire budget, and give it to Mr. River for administration. And it would be good, because we can get Kanye involved, and we can get other motherfuckers involved. Realize the money in economy, I would suggest tonight, for example, we stop the riots. Put a haircut up, and drop twenty-dollar bills down, oh, stop it, it's like a nice, nice, a waste. Thank you for the tagging, thank you for all the overtime for the LAPD. Thank you for fucking us, uh... That's the deal, come here. We got the parent cheerleaders providing, yeah, the Melvin Louisa, yeah. She needs to calm down, girl. She got to go there. You were fully trying to do what we're trying to do, we wanted it, it... These little fast choices coming out. You know how much money that shit was? My, my, God, I could get two, three hundred thousand dollars a raise. You know, we got two, parted away. Now, I realize, and if you're like, hey, you're so foolish, shit. They're over there charging a couple of our brothers and sisters. And I think that Melvin should post a farm for today's newspapers, let's give Melvin a hit. You're trying to break my, 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 that noise. That's right, and then she walked, oh, fuck, we got Tracy, I really talked with her that time. Email that he has since, truly, I see that. I'm always security about all this shit. So, keep up the good work for Melvin, send me that information, and we'll get these motherfuckers to stop wrecking our goddamn businesses and make some money. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, just a quick announcement, please. Uh, there is a special one motion, a number twenty-three motion, and that is motion Harris Dawson leads, and it has been submitted, circulated, and a copy is gone, the whole is on board.
I'm being a special. Look at what men speak of special.
Good morning. Would you like to speak to, um, general public comment? I'd like to speak to seven, eight, and eleven. Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
Right, thank you. Uh, my name is Madison Shockley. Social Equity owner of the dispensary in South Los Angeles.
Albanian, I was waiting for you.
I had to do it, man, it was a good one, I had to do it. Next time I will pride it. I had to do it. No, I had, I had to do it. And we're entrepreneurs that you all should be proud of, because we've survived the gauntlet of the social equity program for all these years. And we've contributed tremendous taxes to the city of Los Angeles. And we've been overtaxed. One of the items that you guys just passed was to not double tax the tax. That's, that's something that passed at the state a year ago, and the city has been continuing to tax the state tax when calculating the tax that we pay. And so that's finally being changed. But what about the last year, for the last few years that that's been happening, we've been overtaxed? We need, we need, uh, to be made whole for that. Uh, and then I want to speak to number seven. Today, uh, pausing round three of the social equity program till twenty-twenty-five. This is a good idea, because we shouldn't bring people into a system that's broken, broken and crushing people. This needs to be fixed and cleaned up before we bring new licenses into the system. Uh, so that's a good thing, but we still need to have this lottery round, and, and there's also licenses that are, still have to transition to annual licensure. So along with this, what needs to be done is extending temporary approval, uh, uh, temporary licenses for social equity until twenty-thirty-one. That needs to go along with extending the social equity program in twenty-thirty-one, like you guys are doing now. Uh, item number eight. This is to, uh, this is the VISA. You guys just approved the VISA that increases our fees by a hundred and thirty-seven percent. When the Department of Cannabis Regulation is broken and everything they do is delayed by six months to a year, and it's been crushing our businesses. You guys just approved to pay them more money. And everybody's salary, they just went up by ten percent, as is done for the last five years. These increases are to make up for the ten percent heat increases that they've gotten every year for the last five years. And you guys just approved that on our backs while we're being crushed, right? Just so you know what's happened with that vote. Um, item number eleven. I addressed that already, uh, our grocery system's total taxes. There is a motion of the social equity reform, the market stabilization motion. Those are the steps that need to be taken after this. These are good initial steps, some of them, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Uh, please pass the motion of solutions that we propose, thank you.
Yeah, alright, Doctor. Follow us.
Hi, councilmembers, uh, I'm speaking to, I'm speaking to, I'm speaking to, honestly, general public comment. Uh, I want to speak to you on this because we have a general public comment. Oh, you have one minute?
Okay. Uh, I would really appreciate it if you guys would actually listen. I'm sorry, I know there are a lot of people who come here to waste your time, uh, but I would please contribute to reconsider whether LAPD should be allowed to be present at ICE raids. Their presence of view creates confusion about LAPD's role and borders line between local policing and federal immigration enforcement and can drift, contradicts LA's commitment as a sanctuary city. Also, LAPD can avoid complicity with unconstitutional actions of the federal government, especially if it does not wish to further erode trust within its communities that it aims to protect and serve. ICE has been engaged in unconstitutional actions using militarized tactics and violence to terrorize LA communities. LAPD does not have to be involved in these violations of the rights of immigrant laws and by being present during ICE raids, many which are treated without judicial warrants, LAPD becomes complicit in actions that violate constitutional protections. Thank you.
Hi, speaking of general public comments. You have one minute. My name is Shuney Chair and I'm with the California migrant policy center. Immigration forces have terrorized our communities for years and since Friday, advocates estimate over three hundred people have been violently enforced into kidnapping ICE. By standing guard while ICE terrorists found the part, LAPD becomes complicit in actions that violate basic constitutional protections. LAPD's presence at the raid violates the spirit and perhaps the letter of the century ordinance, which says that no city resources shall be used for immigration enforcement. This presence doesn't just impact immigrant immunity laws, it traumatizes U.S. citizen children, divides mixed status families, and further erodes public trust across entire communities. I call on the city to hold LAPD accountable, require them to report why they decided to respond to immigration arrests, and to show that LAPD has no role whatsoever in militarized raids in our neighborhoods and schools.
Hello.
Speaker, what items would you like to speak on?
Lovely comments, seventy-eight.
You have two minutes as well as a public comment on one issue. Start with the items now.
Uh, my name is Bruce Rivera. I'm a social equity applicant and license holder. Also, I represent social equity raid, uh, where you're with hundreds of people making sure that the VCR is, does not approve the fee study. Uh, the city of Los Angeles and the VCR and social equity program have failed its mission. The VCR has inhibited critical cannabis owners in LA with high taxes, outraged at an arbitrary increase in excessive processing timeline, and now the city is approving a fee increase and raising wages. This is fraud and violates the city's full cost recovery requirements. The VCR needs to be regulated. Uh, we ask that you reject the audit and reject our audit of proposed fee study and until an independent third party can conduct, can be, uh, conduct with public input, especially social equity owners and myself. Um, and if it's passed, then you cannot use the COVID grant money to cover these inflated fees. Uh, please allocate all state grant funding directly to social equity license holders and not increase in salaries. And please lower taxes and provide tax relief so that legal businesses can survive and provide the tax revenue the city needs. Uh, on public comment, I thank you guys for your efforts that you've done so far to support the immigrant and undocumented community. This is not about policy, uh, or solity. It's about immigrant beings, families, and community. And I'm proud, uh, I'm a proud immigrant and I ask that you do what you can to immediately get ICE out of Los Angeles, stop the raids and protect the peace, and make sure to hold LAPD accountable. Thank you.
All right, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Thank you for everybody who came and shared with us for today. And I'm going, uh, what item do you want?
Mr. President, council passed item one, thirteen through fifty, as well as seventeen and eighteen.
All right, President, um, of course it's up for the roll. Close the roll, can't take it up.
Fifteen on.
All right, next.
Next with the item number seven, and now for the special.
I know they're gonna do that.
Okay. It's a special motion.
So they have to have a special meeting for the special motion, okay?
No, we're gonna do it now. I signed you up for it.
Okay.
Now, they want to suspend the Brown Act and allow the city to do emergency meetings.
It was for the twenty-something, right?
Yeah. Well, they want to suspend the meetings.
Yeah.
And I do emergency meetings. Excuse me.
Yeah. Yep, I have you. I'm also easy to, info at filmthepoliceusa.com. You can remember that. Yeah. Let me know whenever.
Yeah, yeah. No, just starting it up because I shot one with Colter. Do you also go to East Hollywood once?
I go to East, I go to Central, I go to downtown. I've been to Los Feliz.
You know Colter?
Yeah.
You guys on friendly terms or how?
No, I like Colter. I like the fact that he's one of the few neighborhood council board members that actually fucking speaks out.
Right. He does.
So I mean, that's a very fucking rare. I'm not saying the neighborhood council has to be perfect, but shit, man, he's the only dude that speaks out.
I mean, we're like, I'm learning a lot now because I've only been in the system for two years.
Yeah, yeah. I got it.
So it's like, I'm figuring out how the whole thing works and what it means and what it does.
Yeah.
And we're with advisory community.
Yeah.
We're supposed to be over here advising, like, we, like...
Just like the city attorney advises the council.
Right.
You too are a voice that has equal footing on advising.
Right. Exactly.
I agree.
And it's like, uh, we're really not doing that. I really don't feel like the councils, any of them are doing that.
Yeah.
If I can see it.
And you don't, and you don't have to do it just through CIS reports. You can show up to any of these on your personal capacity.
Right. It's like me.
Yes, it doesn't have to be.
And talk to them like direct and more, and not only that, we could also unite our voices.
I agree.
That's what Colter and I are working on right now.
I agree.
Which we shall tell you about when we do the podcast and we'll do all the things.
Yeah. I'm happy to, like I said, man, I'm really easy to get ahold of, info at filmthepoliceusa.com.
Are you also, do you also do film the police Instagram?
Um, I am on Instagram, yeah. Film the Police USA, I'm on Instagram.
Yeah, I'm gonna send you an email right away, just so that way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know, it's really done.
Yeah.
I'll send it from my personal email, I guess.
Okay.
Or no, my business, I don't fucking know.
Either way, it doesn't matter.
Right, right.
Info at filmthepoliceusa.com. USA.com.
Fifteen on.
Okay, I got it.
Yep, that's me. Film the Police USA. Mm-hmm.
You know Chili?
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, I've known Chili for a long time. He's a butterball, if you haven't, you can get ahold of him too. If you guys ever want to collaborate on something, he's actually been filming some stuff. I don't know how you guys, how the other ones are, like, doing each other's names.
No, yeah, my, my, my primary thing has been not just cop watching, my primary thing has specifically been overall government corruption. The LAPD is not the end-all-be-all. I argue it's the prosecutor's office because any evil shit that anybody does, what is the only body that can file criminal charges?
Yeah.
It's only the city attorney and D A's office. Those are the only two. And so when LAPD officers don't get charged, whose fault is that?
Right.
Obviously, it's the prosecutor's office. That's why every LAPD officer in the history of humanity has ever gotten away with it because of the prosecutor's office doesn't charge enough.
Right. They said it was not a big deal.
LAPD is just a symptom.
We'll talk about it, dude.
So that's...
We have so much to talk about.
That's, that's my coverage. I specifically do government corruption.
I love it.
I don't really care much about the LAPD part.
Right.
I just have that email because I interact with them a lot.
Right.
They see it, it's more legit sounding.
Yeah.
And that's, that's it, but...
Listen, the prosecutor is the police.
The prosecutor is the biggest game.
The police is the arm of the prosecutor.
Yes, that's all they are. That's all they are. They're just the dogs, but the master holding the leash is the prosecutor's office.
Right. And in democracy, we're supposed to be the master.
Correct.
So, hey, everybody, we'll be here.
Yep. So like I said, I'll give you my number two if you want.
Yeah.
Right. Because it's in the meeting. Because special one. You need, you need public comment on special one.
You're in trouble.
Hold on, members, we're getting that update from the city attorney.
Are you?
So, the meeting is still in session, I will remind, Mr. Spender, this is your first ever made formal order. I cannot hear what the justice has to say. If you're near laughter, if you embarrass me, you can. That's a George, that's, this is your first made formal order as well. You've suffered a real struggle, and you're eligible for... Okay, so, appreciate most of your patience. We've been informed there was a technical issue with the kiosks and that special one was not available to the first, so you can sign up for it. This being the case, we're going to open up a designated period for public comment on special one. No, then you just sign up. So if you want to speak on special one, please sign up on the kiosk.
Ask them if they actually put it on the kiosk because we don't know. Is he saying it's on there?
It's on there.
Is he saying it's on there?
Yes.
Okay.
It was not on there. Herman, Herman. Why don't they call the names instead? It's better make it through the ringer, man.
All right, let's see. Now it is.
Special one.
Special one.
There it is. Whatever, Thomas Jefferson.
T J. T J.
You got off.
Jack, Jack, J O. J O. J O.
What name did you use?
These crooks are too much, aren't they?
If you said you signed up, then... Manny, he said he signed up.
Uh, where is it?
All the way at the bottom.
All right, we're calling for the other names.
There we go.
Which one?
Annie. Bob.
No, I'll give my name.
They'll know you.
I make sure. I don't play games.
Submit, submit. There you go.
Next. No problem.
So the special one, if I, if I'm understanding is...
They're gonna, they're gonna stop breaking my game. Close the roll, that way it's clear.
What the fuck? I signed up as Trump forty-five.
I just want to make sure I get him on the...
I, I signed up as Satan, just to make sure.
Which, which one? Isn't it all three of these?
No, those aren't specials. The special is that emergency motion. You get one minute.
Long as they... Oh, there it is. There's the food.
You're looking at ten years without all of you fools.
George is gonna tell them.
This is not...
You guys have a copy, you guys have a copy of one. It's on the board. You guys need to take a picture so you can read it.
No, I'm saying it's not on the...
No, no, they posted it on the board to fulfill the legal requirement.
So they're posting it, so they're saying...
And you gotta take a picture.
Yeah.
You still got time, you can let these guys go first, but I would want, I would recommend, unless you're gonna get ruled out of order, take a picture and relate to it. You do a good job.
Yeah, it's a suspension of the Brown Act, that's what I was gonna talk about.
Okay. Perfect. Then you already know. Right through here, Thomas Jefferson.
Thank you, sir.
No, you're good. You're good. So I wrote a complaint on this very issue of the suspension of the Brown Act just because you want it to be so right, and this is exactly what this special motion is at hand before us. And this isn't the first time this body nor any other city body has done this. It's literally been the police commissioners board, it's literally been the mayor who has also had special private meetings she doesn't announce beforehand, and it's literally been various other commission boards that do not give any due notice. It's been the CPABs that have done the same thing, trying to suspend the Brown Act without giving any due notice, without, with suppressing public comment, and it's just a habitual pattern of the city to violate the Brown Act, to suspend it at will, and yet not give a damn. The feds are on you, the U.S. Attorney's Office is well in touch, and it's just an utter disgrace. The suspension constantly, just because you say so, the Brown Act, it's a criminal misdemeanor for doing so, and you know it. It's true. It's a one-count criminal misdemeanor.
Daddy, why are you here? Because I didn't listen to Mr. Trump, fucker, that's why I'm losing. But Charlie's okay for his cooperation and agreement, right? Everybody, John, he's a fucking good...
So, George, you have been warned, just, Mr. Spender, your time has come. Mr. President, George has been warned already and helps remove you in line. Please remove him from the meeting, subject to a sentence.
You have ten seconds. No! Because I put you in jail. You have not a clue what the hell is going on, you crazy people. And we're gonna take pleasure in putting you in prison.
So, George, you have been ordered removed from this meeting. Mr. Spender, I would tell you to use the fourth as well, and then pockets not running good, it's not your turn to speak. Okay, go ahead. You have the five remaining seconds. You have the next five. Go ahead, you have one minute. One.
Thank you so much. Uh, if you guys can't just suspend the Brown Act whenever you want, that's a behavior of authoritarian, stupid, even then it is, agitators out there, please stop talking cops, you just helped Trump. As you and Chris Harris Dawson, your efforts have sustained for personnel, Brown Act, and for free speech, you really need to go fuck yourself. Thank you guys so much.
It's Brown Act suspension.
Hey, what's up, Zee Kalsman, it's sunshine. So special, my friends. Don't hide from the process. We really need you to expand leadership to create a system where you can go get around the public's view of what you do. We really need you to shine for us more than any, like, honestly. This is the time to do everything completely transparently and not put yourself... This is the time to do everything completely transparently, and not put yourself into a place where you can't, you can't see who definitely is going on. It's imperative that your leadership is on the front line right now, not in some hidden secret room, talking amongst yourselves on how you're going to maneuver the people. So, please, make it possible for us to see that you guys are shining.
Start a new process, try. Mr. Herman, you have also been warned already, Mr. Herman has also been warned a little bit. Please remove Mr. Herman, subject to rule seven, please.
What the, what the mother, fucker! What the fuck, mother, fucker! Fuck you, Trump! Fuck you, Trump! Fuck you, Trump! Fuck twenty-three! Fuck special one! Fuck special one! Fuck special one! Trump! 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 Fuck your motion, special one! Fuck the mayor! Fuck this idiot, man! Fuck all that shit! Rule seven! Rule seven! Fuck you!
Should we try to file a criminal rights dispute against Mr. Herman, or either criminal criminal services, because he's jacked up? And an animal privilege charge? I'm sorry, Mr. Speller, you just took off the back. Whenever you start your talking, you can, we'll start your time, go.
I can see why the council would like to forgive one of the public, it's very clear, understandable, I get you, and at the same time, you don't have that privilege. You give leaders privileges where they make sacrifices, and the sacrifice you give to make is being upfront, Senator. Thank you so much.
Fuck you, our police! Fuck you, state! Fuck you, our police! Motherfuckers!
Good morning, you have one minute.
Good morning, um...
I don't know, it's a drink.
I think that is unfair, for you guys to try to, um, revoke the Brown Act. We come down here, um, legally, to tell our stories about our struggle in San Francisco. My name is Asia Allen, and I represent the LAPD, the Black Los Angeles Community Council. And, again, speaking of earlier, listening to the tax on the bills receipts, thank you very much, but all the debt that we have to pay in, you know, in this limbo state, it's hurting us, we're in a state of emergency, the cannabis industry is in a state of emergency, we need help. I mean, at the end of the day, the cost, the cost recovery setting, we need to be real. Why are we raping, we're, we're barely hanging on, you know, we're drowning.
He's talking about the food. I thought this was a special one. Why is she talking about the food?
Oh, I know. I know.
Two years later, twenty twenty-three.
I know. It's a bunch of shit.
Um, why don't we spend more counsel on special one, Senator?
Alright, something along that, folks, we'll always have to go.
Nice. There is a request to send special one back with...
Without objection, that'll be the order. Your disordered baby are adjourned, thank you so much.
I agree.
Alright, maybe if you stopped discriminating against the disabled, maybe that wouldn't happen. You're the one that needs mental health, you can't run a meeting legally. That needs mental health. You're the one that needs treatment, not him. You could just let the guy speak one fucking minute, and it wouldn't happen, but you have to be a bully. You have to bully public speakers, and sit in that chair and bully us. And some people have to cope. Other people, like me, are administrative niggers and are able to handle it, except that he can't. He's trying to be white. Trying to be black, like my father. My birth certificate says the wrong name. My real father was black, he was black at the beginning. I know you don't believe that, that I came out wearing white, otherwise my mother would have got a divorce. My father was five foot five, how come I'm five eleven and a half? Because I know who my real daddy is, I asked for the battle. You want to hold emergency fucking meetings? Emergency meetings are illegal, dude. You have to have a national emergency. Donald Trump didn't do that. See?
Let's go, win.
See that? We're all from the ghetto. We're all from the ghetto. But I'm trying to be better. I'm trying to be better. You're not trying to be better. I'm trying to be better. You know, you don't wear a tie because you're cool, you're not cool. You're a fool. You're like, you don't know doesn't wear a tie either, because he's another fool.
Let's go, win.
You gotta wear a tie and a coat. This is a professional meeting, you're responsible for four billion dollar budget, dude. Four billion dollar budget, you can't have a fucking tie. You know, the city council is a criminal enterprise, under state and federal law, and that motion right there justifies that existence. You can't hold them, but you're gonna do it anyway.
I need to file a police report. Marquis. Wait, 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 hold on. No, 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 he's, he's armed with incompetence. Or scared of it, it's dangerous.
Have a nice day, Mark.
Amelda and Tracy Irene bitch said, yeah, and called him animal cruelty, okay? So, you know, I don't give a fuck, it was in the public meeting. That was in a pussy way, good news. The sergeant said, it's not, it's not, it's not bad.
It's nothing.
The, the dog is responding to a crisis situation. There is...
Hey, but they don't have to know that.
No.
Do you know, I'm sorry, do you guys really want to discuss this on camera?
One reason.
We don't care, it's just the law.
I mean, it, it, the big, the big thing is, is that these guys would not let him speak for a lousy sixty seconds on an illegal motion.
Right.
And they, they create a disruption. It's not an actual disruption.
It's a draw.
It's a technical disruption. But he says, and by the way, the woman spoke after you, was talking about cannabis, she was on topic. They don't say shit, no warning.
Oh, really? So we got that in touch?
And, and so the reason why is because why, why did she get the right to be on topic? She's black, and she's a cannabis applicant. And you know, you know how much money they donated to council members? Do you know how much, do you know how much?
Milton. I heard that, bro.
Do you know what I found out when they, when they first started this? All the guys that started, they got kicked out because they were paying millions of dollars under the table, these fucks, to get those licenses. Oh, are you fools in trouble? We got ten years for you. You had your attorney against the federal court, you fool! Oh, are we gonna have fun with your ass? Can't shit, okay? Do you know what's coming, baby? So what, so we're... This is worth being... Hey, does anybody know if it's coming off the home?
No, it's still active.